And I would like to call a meeting to order for the trustees.
Recording in progress.
First order of business, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of the Father, to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. For God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all else.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for coming. I am going to share my screen as well. This is the public information meeting for the proposed merger between the Town and the Village. Purpose of this meeting is to field any questions or comments for the trustees and the Select Board before the charter, proposed charter and merger plan is put forward before the two boards, which will be realistically probably next at our next meeting for voting and adoption, then begins the process of the fleshew. Then would begin the process of, the legal process to move forward towards a public vote for the merger of the Town and the Village. Thankfully, we have one of our attorneys, Sarah Buxton, who is here, who has been working and drafting the plan of merger for the Village and the Town, which you all have. We've tried sharing this throughout the town. I'm going to actually share this on the screen so that anyone who watches the recording will be able to follow along. Vast Sarah to do a brief overview of the proposal of the charter. Just trying to give everyone a, you know, brief overview of it. And then, I guess, we'll take any questions, comments, and go from there. Sarah, if you're gonna have to use your microphone, so thank you very much.
All right. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Nice to meet you all. My name is Sarah Buxton. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Tarrant, Gillis &amp; Shems up in Montpelier. Manage any feedback here. And I live locally, I'm over in Mendon, and I'm a member of the Mendon Select Board and Mendon Planning Commission. My task here was to draft a plan of merger for the Village of Ludlow and the Town of Ludlow. And I worked with an ad hoc committee, a community committee, to guide my drafting and some of the decisions. What you have before you is a pretty basic plan of merger. And before I give a broad overview of what the components of the plan are, I thought I would let you know what the process is that comes after tonight. So the process for merging begins when both the trustees and the Select Board approve the same plan. So what we talk about tonight, I'm sure you will hear some feedback. You may wish for some changes to be made. Those changes can be made, hopefully, before you voted out. They can also be made after you vote them out. But we have, we have some time here to be able to make sure that this plan of merger meets with your approval and is to the satisfaction of the voters of the two communities. After that, there is a notice period, and two hearings have to be held in each the Village and the Town. And so there's some timelines around when those hearings need to be held. I've provided a draft schedule to Brendan to begin to review. The timeline would kick off when you both approve the merger. After those hearings, there will be another notice and warning period for the vote. And when you have the vote, which could be as soon as August, it would be for all of the voters in the Village of Ludlow and all of the voters in the Town of Ludlow. I'm gonna pause right there because one interesting thing is going to happen, and I wanna highlight it here. There are voters in the Village of Ludlow who are also voters in the Town of Ludlow. Correct?
Yes.
So, there will be some people who will go and vote in one election, and they will go and vote in a different election on the same matter. This happened up in Linden. Hi Brett. This happened up in Linden, when Linden and Lindenville merged. The Town Clerk and the Assistant Town Clerk, one was of the Town, one was of the Village. They had an inside joke about one person getting to vote twice. That's just the way that it is. I've confirmed with the Secretary of State's office that we're reading the law correctly, and I wanted to flag that from the outset.
Can those forums and votes happen on the same day?
Yes, ideally, they would happen on the same day. Yep.
That's gotta be a very small amount of people.
Right. Right. I think smaller than the Village of Lindenville, the Village of Linden. Great. If your vote does pass in both, it needs to pass in both the Village and the Town, there's a process to notify and provide information to the Secretary of State's office. And then, the legislature has to approve this. So, next legislative session, which will begin in January of 2026, members of your community, maybe some of you, will bring to your legislator or to the committee directly your charter. They will also receive notice from the Secretary of State's office. And you will go in front of the Government Operations Committee and explain any matters. If the legislature has any issues or any problems with any parts of the merger plan, which will become your charter, they may provide that feedback and may work with the community to make changes. It's very unusual for them to make substantive changes to such a plan. And I'll say, from the way that we've drafted it, there isn't a lot of newness to this plan, and so it's unlikely to cause a lot of attention, but who knows with the legislature? All right, so now I'm going to move to the plan of merger. As I noted, this is, my instruction was to make it basic, simple, and to try to achieve the status quo for the two communities. This will effectively repeal the current charter for the Village of Ludlow and the charter for the Town of Ludlow and replace it with this new charter for just the Town, which will now be the merged communities. The powers of the Town will remain the same. This is drafted so as to permit the Town to do basically everything that's already a default power currently in statute. So this is your opportunity now, as a Town and as a community, a set of communities, to contemplate whether there are things that you see other communities being able to do that you currently aren't able to do, and a charter is your mechanism for asking the legislature for permission to do that. An example might be currently, if you had a public official on the Select Board or Board of Trustees, and they just decided not to come to any more meetings for whatever period of time, the only time that could change is at the next election, either the person would resign, or at the next election, you would elect somebody else. Some communities have provisions that say, if you don't come to X number of meetings, your seat is considered vacant. So those are the sorts of things that, you know, some communities do. We don't have a lot of newness in this, in this plan. So the powers of the Town are as they currently exist and as they are by default in the state statute. The fiscal year will remain the same. The electric department's fiscal year is different than the fiscal year of the Village currently. I believe the electric department's fiscal year is the calendar year, and yours is July 1 to June 30. This permits that to remain the same. Officers of the Town, you'll still have a Town Manager form of governance. You've already passed that in the past. This charter acknowledges that you want to continue in this merged state with a Town Manager form of governance. The elected and appointed officers are your five members of the Select Board, one moderator. Rather than five electric commissioners, there will be, I'm sorry, rather than three electric commissioners, the number will be set by the Select Board. It will not be fewer than five or more than seven voting members. So the Select Board of the Town will choose how many people you would like for it to be. In prior conversations with the Board of the Electric Department, ideally, five was the number that they were looking for, and so these are decisions that will be made in the future. The reason we left some room for flexibility, as you'll see in a moment when we get to some of the electric department provisions, is that if the service area changes or if there are other things that happen with the electric department, you may have the flexibility to be able to add up to seven members, voting members. You'll still maintain your five cemetery commissioners, your three water and sewer commissioners, three trustees of public funds, and justices of the peace, the number of which will be determined in accordance with the Vermont Constitution. So everyone's number of justices of the peace is by default determined in that way. There were some officers here that we did change, and I believe it was because you might have recently just had a vote to appoint your Town Manager, right, and Town Treasurer?
Town Clerk.
Not Town Manager.
Clerk and Treasurer.
Your Town Clerk and Treasurer. So you'll see that those offices are missing. Please definitely take a look here at this list. If you see things that you feel should be there, these are the sorts of changes that we can make. In the case of vacancy, in any of these positions, they will be filled by the Select Board. This largely mirrors what is in current law about how vacancies are treated, but we decided that we would still keep this in here just because it makes it really clear to anyone who's reading it what happens if there's a vacancy.
Are those departments, like, set in statute, or like DRB or Planning Commission aren't on those?
The DRB and Plan, so those are appointed positions. You can make them elected.
Okay. So we're just kinda just taking what we have?
You're keeping what you currently do. Yep. Yep. And most towns also appoint their Planning Commission and DRB. Select Board stays the same, and the terms are staggered in the same way that they are staggered here. You'll see the differences in the power of the Select Board, which is different than how it may be specifically described in state law, is that they can set the number of commissioners, as we already noted, for the Electric Board. And it states that the term of the commissioners for each Town will not exceed, I'm sorry, the term for each of the commissioners from each Town served by the Electric Department other than Ludlow for a term not to exceed three years. Let's see. You're still going to appoint officers. I'll point out, I believe right now you still elect the first constable, in my recollection.
That's correct.
And so I was advised, so this would be one change, now you would have this be an appointed position. You may also, the Select Board may also assign additional duties to different appointed officers, commissions, departments. That's also largely aligned with Title 24 in state law right now. And... Is there anything else there that's different? Yep, so everything else with the Select Board, as far as I can tell here, is just as it would be by default under state law. You will still have a Board of Listers, and they will be three members. They'll continue to perform the duties imposed on them by state law. If the Town votes to eliminate the Office of Lister, they can do that. That's currently allowed by state law, and they can authorize the Select Board to appoint an assessor to perform those duties. The advisory group had advised that this, we should leave things as they are right now, but noted that it might be of interest in the future, and having this in the plan of merger would at least keep it in the forefront of citizens' minds that you do have the power to change that if you want to in the future. The Water and Sewer Board is combined and will be the same, the same number of people. So that is another change, because I believe right now you have a Water Board and you have a Sewer, you have the Select Board.
The trustees are the Waste and Sewer Commissioners.
Right. So by default, by default, if you don't create a board for these services, then your governing body or legislative body becomes this, and so this would combine those roles into a specific named board. You'll still have a moderator, you'll still have your Cemetery Commission. The Commission, the Cemetery Commission will still be responsible for all the duties that they are currently responsible for under state law. They'll serve staggered terms, and I believe the way we've drafted the Cemetery Commission, that should see no changes as well. The Electric Department, broadly speaking, the Electric Department and its description here in the merger plan is intended to provide all of the powers that state law currently gives municipal utilities, so that you have the most expansive power available to your local utility. It still is organized under the Town of Ludlow, but it is governed by its own Board of Commissioners. So that Board of Commissioners is elected. However, if there's a vacancy, then the Select Board would appoint people to those vacancies. The Select Board may also change the number of commissioners. Elected commissioners, those that are elected to serve, need to be from the Town of Ludlow. So all of the voting members of the Electric Board will be from Ludlow. The Select Board may appoint additional seats who are non-voting members from other towns who are served by the utility. So that's Plymouth, potentially Mount Holly.
Cavendish.
Cavendish. Cavendish, Mount Holly.
Plymouth.
Those two.
Tyson.
We tie in Mount Holly, but there's no customers.
Okay. Yep. So those individuals will now have a voice, but they won't have the voting power. And part of the reason for that is because since the utility is organized underneath the municipality, the commissioners still have a duty to the Town. They have a fiduciary duty. They have a duty of loyalty to the Town, and so this ensures that your citizens are the ones making the decisions for the utility.
And that's, you don't have to appoint someone, it just gives you the option?
Exactly. Yep.
I mean, they have the opportunity now to come to any meeting they want.
Say that again?
They have the opportunity now to come to any meeting that they want.
That's exactly right.
Even Cavendish, I believe, could come to the meeting. Am I not right?
Yes. They could, but they would come as a member of the public or as a ratepayer, like ratepayer comment, but now...
That'd be no different than a non-voting member.
Well, I think what happens is when, when the utility is bringing matters to the PUC, the PUC and the Public Service Department like to see that the ratepayers are represented. And so this is a way to demonstrate that all of the ratepayers are represented, though they're not necessarily given the same power. But your point is well taken in terms of the actual power they have to, you know, make decisions. The powers of the Board are, this replicates what is in statute, as are the duties of the Board. The Board can also exercise eminent domain, although it's unlikely that it will need to, but if there is a project that requires eminent domain and the utility needs something and can demonstrate all of the elements necessary under eminent domain, they have the power to do that. The transition, basically what will happen on the date that this is approved, you know, that this is approved and this goes into effect, is that the commissioners who are currently in office will continue until their terms expire. So the three individuals who are in office as of July 1 of next year will stay in office until their terms expire, and the Select Board will cause, will call a special meeting, and they will elect two additional commissioners from the Town. So this is another point that we were bringing to you. You could have the Select Board just appoint two people, but it was the sort of collective decision that we could call a special meeting, and, you know, you'll know far in advance if the legislature approves your charter, it probably won't be difficult to have that meeting really close in time to the period that this happens and be able to elect your new commissioners.
Have they ever turned one down?
Not these days. I think, I think the legislature, and I think the state in general, is in favor of more mergers, although I am familiar with one recent, very abnormal, in my view, action where a small village in the Town of Colchester actually came and brought their charter to become recognized as a Village just last year. So it's that one weird example where they're creating more municipal units rather than slimming them down. All right. Procedural matters, Town meetings will be the same, the same as they are currently for the Town of Ludlow. The Select Board can still cause any question to be voted on by Australian ballot at a special or annual meeting, so you can still have the power to have those petitioned meetings, those petitioned, you know, sort of public, matters of public question that need to be decided either because the Select Board has brought it forward or the proper number of citizens has brought it forward. This reaffirms open governance as a guiding principle. It is the law, so open government is not going away. You're just restating that open government is something that's important to the Town of Ludlow in its new form.
I noticed citizens used there and residents used in other places. There a different definition for those terms?
So, and when it comes to open government, government is open to all citizens. So even when you have a public meeting and you have open comments, citizens who are not residents of your town are still entitled to address government even though, even though they aren't residents of your town.
So citizens are property owners or residents?
So citizens are any person who is a citizen of the State of Vermont. I would even, I don't think the Vermont Supreme Court has ruled on exactly what the definition of a citizen is for the purposes of open government, but I would suspect that a citizen of the United States would also be entitled to address a local government. Residency has different definitions in different contexts, so I would say if it's a resident who is someone who can be appointed or elected to an office, they have to be both a resident of your Town, but also usually that means a registered voter.
Thank you.
Yep. Assets, finances, and indebtedness. Everything that was the Village of Ludlow's will then, will now become the Town of Ludlow's. The Town of Ludlow will be responsible for all the assets and the debts. This includes the Electric Department. Okay. The new Town will have the same authority as every other Town has in terms of bonds and any type of indebtedness in that regard going into the future. And for all administrative purposes and all contractual purposes, this merger is intended to impact any contract that you may have or any authority that the former, the then-former Village has under, let's say, the PUC. So there will be probably a form that's filed with the PUC when this is complete that essentially just notifies them that the Electric Department is now under the municipality of the Town of Ludlow. But this clause in here around the complete, the complete transfer is sort of a backstop to what, what you would need should there be any question about whether something still is retained by the old entity of the Village of Ludlow. We've talked about property. Payment in lieu of taxes. Annually, right now, the department contributes to the Town in lieu of taxes in the form of either a cash payment or the equivalent in free services and municipal rate benefits and an amount equaling the amount of money they would have been, that would have been received by the Town in ad valorem real estate taxes. So this, this basically takes what is currently happening with the department and brings it up to the Town. The department management, this clarifies how the department will be managed, and if you can kind of envision when you voted for a Town Manager form of government, this also ensures that the department management is managed by someone who is responsible and accountable to the Board, but it also permits the Board to appoint personnel and carry out policies or duties that the Board specifically grants to it. So it, it will continue over from what the Board currently has, which is a department manager. This would be called a general manager. I don't see, I think it's a distinction without a difference, but you will, you will now have a general manager who is like a municipal manager but for the department. And the personnel policies of the department may differ from the policies of other departments within the Town. So that's an important consideration. That's currently how it works now, where the department has, some of their staff are now collectively bargaining, they are unionized, they have their own personnel handbook, their salaries and benefits are set by the Board. That will be as it is now, once this transition is complete. The existing land use regulations, as I understand it, the Village has recently updated their zoning and flood hazard regulations, and the proposal is unless something else changes, or you advise otherwise, everything that is in the Village of Ludlow zoning and flood hazard regulations, except for the sections related to the specific zoning areas and the dimensional requirements in those zoning areas, will become your new Town of Ludlow zoning and flood hazard regulations. Similarly, the subdivision regulations, which are either just due to be adopted, you'll see that this hasn't been filled in here, either they've just been adopted or they're going to be adopted soon, if I recall. Yep, there it is. Those will also be ratified and will be, they will be the subdivision regulations for the Town of Ludlow.
So if we were, I mean, say we, we... So if we were, I mean, say we, we voted on it tonight and said, hey, we want to, we want to both do this. At that point, we really can't adopt any new, like zoning regs or update that document until we're fully gone through everything, is that?
Well, so what I would recommend to you, it's not that you can't do it. It's that it's going to cause complication because what you vote on and what you bring to the legislature and they approve will be what it is. And so if you're anticipating further changes, one piece of feedback, I'll make a note for myself, is if that's even in the realm of possibility, I can draft this to say as an effect as of the day of the, the merger, July 1, 2026, so that if there are changes that are made, but you would probably have to decide which is going to be the governing document. You know, is it the village or is it the towns? What would be wonderful, if you have the capacity to do it, now that you've got all this time, you know, a whole year, is perhaps you would begin the drafting process of pulling together both of those, the regulations, both, both the subdivision regulations and the zoning and flood hazard regulations, which I think has been the intent, if I understand it correctly, of the current process of updating.
So it's, we're mostly broken down into like different districts that have, each district has, so those will remain unchanged?
Yes.
Okay. So that if you live within what is presently the village book, right? You live in residential zone two and those rules, those are all going to stay the same?
Your setbacks.
It's just the title of the document that will change?
It is, yep. So all of your zone, the zones and the specific dimensional requirements?
Yep.
And anything that's specific to that?
Zone.
Zone will stay the same.
Okay.
All of the rest of the zoning regulations, when I worked with your zoning administrator, we looked at the different articles and everything else that has to do with the process?
Right. Those are all the same.
Those are all the same.
For both places. Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that we're not taking a step back because there's been a lot of hard work to?
Yes.
Figure out what zones and what rules and, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes. And if there's any continued concern about that, you know, certainly make sure you put your eyes on this section and say, I want to make sure that such and such happens. And I'll go back and make sure that the language is, you know, crystal clear about what you intend for it to be on July 1, 2026.
I'm just, I'm just making sure of that.
Yeah.
Instead of having like five documents, I'll have like two.
Yeah.
Yeah, just so, okay.
That's right.
Just making sure. Thank you.
Sure. And then finally, continuation in office or employment. Basically, the employees of the town and the former village will continue in their office or employment, including the officers, employees of the former electric and light department. It'll just be called something else. It'll be organized under something else. And so I've, I've checked in with your different town administrators, your, your town manager to ensure that there's no concern about the continued employment of any person. And it sounds like you're all organized in a way that's going to make this pretty seamless. Finally, the, if there are any past, present, or future rights, claims, actions, orders, contracts, or legal or administrative proceedings that are in progress or that arise in the future that affect the town or the former village, they, they will, they will continue to be maintained and enforceable against the Town of Ludlow. So this is something just to kind of keep your eye on. It doesn't look like there's any threat of any lawsuit or anything against the village specifically, but the town would then be the new party to that case. They would be the successor party. And everything else, all of your ordinances, resolutions, orders, regulations, and policies of the Town of Ludlow and the former village of Ludlow will be, will become fully effective and remain in full force and effect, except, accepting only those ordinances, resolutions, orders, regulations, and policies that are inconsistent with the charter. So if there's something in here that says that, you know, if the village had a particular policy and it is addressed, and I couldn't find any, this is just catch-all language. But if the village had a specific policy and, or an ordinance and it was only in effect for, or it affected just, I don't know, the, the electric department or the sewer and water, the makeup of the sewer and water board, since that is addressed here in the charter, the charter will prevail. But if it's not addressed, then it will still continue in effect. And the likely outcome of that will be, it will come to your attention as the select board and you'll determine whether or not you want to reauthorize it as a select board or if you want to do anything different and sunset it. And it will take effect on July 1, 2026.
Sarah, just one, I'm, I'm a pain in the ass, but on page seven?
Yes.
Under your bullets or numbering, you have A, B, C, D, D.
Oh, is that not how the alphabet goes?
No. I just figured you wouldn't go right to this date. Leave it to me, right?
Thank you. And any other little pieces before the, the different bodies voted out? Absolutely. We can always fix Scrivener's errors, but if you see anything else, like as you pointed out, Noah, citizen and resident, and you feel like, hmm, given what I've already talked to you about, I'd rather see citizen than resident or resident rather than citizen. Those are the sorts of things that we can change. And after you hear public feedback, you can also go back and change it. So you're voting it out next month, whenever that's going to be, won't be your last bite at the apple.
I have one more question. And so in regards to pending matters, there will be, will there be no effect on either party's ability to recreate their FEMA funds?
Tell me more about what you're, so you're talking about the village and the town both have FEMA grants?
So we're, I don't know.
Yeah, we have, we have money.
I don't think it would. Okay. I just want to make sure that, because there's, I just want, there's a lot of money potentially on the line.
Yeah, I don't see that being a problem.
I just want to make sure that we're not making a million dollar error.
It wouldn't be, if the village is still has money outstanding and is owed to us from a FEMA reimbursement, we'd still collect that money.
Okay.
I, I can verify with Vermont Emergency Management.
And I can even just add, I mean, it can't hurt to put in a sentence that says, should there be?
I guess that would be, I guess that would be more a question for FEMA or Vermont Emergency Management that if by chance?
The successor.
We still have money outstanding in the village were to merge, are they going to say, oh, well, the village doesn't exist anymore, so we're not paying?
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
That's a good point, George.
You're the successor organization. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buxton.
All right, thanks.
Any comments from anybody? Bruce?
Bruce Schmidt. Bruce Schmidt, 988 Chapman Road. A couple of things, I guess I just wanted to maybe ask a question in, you know, with the committee that was working on it. Why is there so much delineation of the electric department from the town?
It was my understanding, I served on the committee. It was my understanding that it is already operational as a semi-independent organization. And to streamline it and make it more geared towards our current statutes, that's how we crafted it.
So I guess I would ask, because I think you need to build this for the future. And while people may not want to, you know, be thinking this way, you should be thinking that all the work that is done at the electric department can be done through the town as you transform and, you know, right-size, you know, the operations. Because if you look at the sewer and water department, you have sewer and water department commissioners, but the sewer and water department employees work through the town. But even to the point of the electric department being on a different fiscal year creates, will just create angst potentially down the road for those that won't be sitting, none of us will be here. It'll be something that we're doing for, you know, I think there should be so much flexibility to allow, so you can be on the same, you know, same fiscal year. Those employees should be, you should be able to bring those employees in under the town personnel plan. Yes, they have a union, but there's also a police union that the town deals with. So it's not like the town doesn't have a union. I guess I would just encourage that when you do this, you bring it all together so it's not, it's not separate. You know, I think that's, that's important. So that's my, my feedback on that. And the other is, why, what was the thinking of the committee to not expand the select board?
That was also, again, a great question. Mr. Nicole, if you'd like to answer, you're more than welcome.
I mean, to jump in here, just as another member of the committee.
Sure.
I mean, I'm sure Justin and Brett could answer this too. I think part of my rationale, I guess first of the electric department and with the water and sewer, a lot of this plan was about the status quo. And we don't want to necessarily make changes because we think changes should be voted on by themselves. We wanted to implement the system that we have now, which really is that the water and sewer and the electric department are, like the water, the water and sewer department are part of the village, but they are, all of their expenses, all of the, the labor of the employees of those departments are separated out and they're billed separately to the ratepayers of the water and sewer department. They are not billed to the village. And so that only, when they're working on the water and sewer lines, it only affects people that are ratepayers now of those systems. And the, the electric department is the same way. Everything that happens under the electric department goes to its own budget. It goes to the ratepayers of the electric department. It does not affect the village. Technically, as, as Sarah alluded to, the village holds the liability. And so if something were to happen and the village, the electric department defaulted, then the village would be liable to, to secure those debts. But otherwise, the, the electric department operates as its own entity and all of its bills are paid by only the ratepayers. The water and sewer departments right now work the same way. They are only, all the bills go to the ratepayers. Any costs of running the system go to the ratepayers. The village is liable technically for those departments if they were to encumber debts that they couldn't pay on their own. But everything is actually paid by the departments themselves. And so we wanted to continue that. I think two things that we thought about with expansion were, the electric department, I am also a member of the electric department board of commissioners. We wanted to expand the board because we only have three members. It makes it really difficult and complicated to have a meeting and to, you know, to have a conversation with somebody else in town because technically two people could be a quorum and I'm not allowed to have a conversation with my other board members without warning a meeting. And so we wanted to expand the board for that reason. I think we also considered expanding the board of the water and, the new water and sewer board, but we didn't, we felt like we should continue with the status quo so that we could vote on those in a future year. And I think the select board was kind of the same thinking. I personally would like to see the select board expanded. I would like to see the roles a little different and the ability to establish subcommittees of three members that wouldn't be a quorum necessarily. But I think that that is, that is a consideration for the town to make down the road after we've kind of gotten this big elephant out of the way. I think that the merger itself, we didn't want to jeopardize the idea of the merger with some new thought that we had that we thought would be the best path forward. And so this is really just a continuation of the status quo in that sense. I think where this, you know, just speaking to my own reasons for supporting this, I think that right now this town has, there's a lot of administrative overhead for very little service. The village does not really do that much anymore. I think years ago, the village had village trash pickup. It was something that you could point to that village, the village entity offered to the village residents that did not otherwise benefit the town residents. When we lost village trash pickup, there really is not a service that the village provides explicitly that otherwise the town doesn't receive. Technically, the village owns its roads, owns the sidewalks, but in the town, obviously, most townspeople still use those things. And so there's a lot of administrative overhead that goes into the office to try to separate out and figure out what percentage of maintenance of village roads should be charged to village residents and what should be charged to town residents. And it's just a lot of extra time that, that the people in the office downstairs spend to try to figure out those expenses. And it's unnecessary time. It's, it's just a burden and it adds administrative oversight that we simply don't need anymore because there is no explicit service that separates the two entities. And I, I just think that's an important thing to keep in mind, that there really isn't, you're not, there's no bill that you're going to be charged as a townsperson that you are not charged now by merging these two entities. If anything, it's going to eliminate a lot of time that we're right now paying our administrative staff, doing this extra calculation and work to split out these costs into right now three different entities between the water and sewer, water, wastewater, village, and town. Four entities really. Four, basically the same employees, sometimes doing the same work.
Thank you, Mr. Nicole.
Bruce?
Thank you, thank you, Logan. And I guess I just would encourage the board to give yourself so much flexibility so you can bill through the town and not have a, you know, electric light department office. Those are years down the road, but it's just a good, it gives you good options, even if you don't do it, if you don't do anything and everything stays status quo. The last question I have, with the elimination and the merger, does that mean that the state does not pick their plow up at the village line?
The gentleman from Chapman Road.
With the new, with the new pavement, they're going to want to keep it down.
Yeah.
Mr. Schmidt, I'd like to just parlay on quickly what Mr. Nicole was saying. I remember you were championing a, I'm sorry, I'm a little tired today, a change at the state level with Australian ballots in regards to that. And our charter change was under threat because the legislative was very tough at that moment to approve these charters. Now, Ms. Buxton earlier alluded to the fact that it's a little easier now, or perhaps a little bit more friendly. Our thought process going into this was, let's keep it simple. Let's get this passed. Let's merge. Let's understand what that looks like and hopefully make it a streamlined or easier process at the legislative end. And then we should go back and scale what I consider to be pertinent topics. And I did bring up the fiscal year changes and why not merge the electric department and everything. I think Mr. Nicole hit the nail on the head with that, but just to give you more insight.
Anybody else? Alice?
I'm, I'm very concerned about too much power in too few hands. There's a lot happening here and for someone to say that the village doesn't have any assets, the sewer plant is extremely valuable, extremely. And I don't, you know, this perhaps wasn't the place to address it in here, but what's the procedure going to be when everybody is a member that can use the sewer plant? How will it be restricted? Right now, it's restricted to the village unless you vote to expand it to somebody. But will everybody in town be able to get on the sewer plant? What's the capacity? I'm certain it's not indefinite. The other thing is, there's the whole lakes area, which if anybody should get on the sewer plant, it's that sewer plant, it's that area out there, which they've been seeking that for at least 30 years. I mean, obviously, some people have built their own sewer systems, but there's still a lot of, you know, 50 gallon drums out there that are the sewer for some of those camps. And I think that, I wouldn't vote for this unless I knew exactly what was going to happen with the sewer plant. Who will get on? How will it be determined? I mean, it's, it's very, very important. What will it do to the rest of, you know, the areas very close to the town where many more homes can be built or will be able to be built if they can get on the sewer? So I, I really don't think that part has been thought through. So I think, the other thing is, I am concerned about so much power in too few hands. Not that, not that anybody here is going to do anything that is wrong, but, you know, certainly in the past, there was a lot of favoritism in some boards in the past, not anybody that I know that's here tonight anywhere. But, you know, certainly I've seen things in my 55, 57 years in Ludlow whereby favoritism was given to sometimes a family member or to somebody who's a friend of somebody. And with regard to the sewer, you know, people will feel a lot of pressure to let people on, and how exactly will that be decided? So, good luck.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Nico.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
She, Alice does bring up a really big point, particularly with the, the Homes Act, that drastically changes our ability to govern expansion. And they specifically outline being able to be connected to sewer and water. And so, in the areas that can be connected to sewer and water, there is drastically different regulations that we've basically been force-fed by the state. So if there is, and I agree that in certain aspects, this could lead to major implications, at least in the zoning world, which is already complicated enough, you could expand and have the very tiny developments or building that's in the village could expand, because if I'm correct, doesn't the sewer end right before your road, Alice?
My, my property line is the village.
Is the village line, right? So, so, right, so, let's just use, Alice brought it up, you know, if Alice said, hey, my system failed, I wanted to connect, but I'm outside the normal, right? And she's able to connect. Now she falls under new zoning rules that we've been force-fed. And that, let's just say, in 20 years, you decide that, you say, hey, I'm going to sell out and the next person wants to build a development there, they fall under a new guidelines, or as it currently sits, if it remains unchanged, at the state, that those guidelines would take in effect. So that you will see the expansion of, other than the word sprawl, I don't know how to cover it, you'll lose the town look, that rural look.
But, but at this point, right now, I mean, the sewer goes outside the village by, I said the sewer goes outside the village by significance. I mean, it's all over the mountain, that, the mountain's not village. I mean, anybody, at this point, right now, can tie into the sewer if they want to make the expense to freaking put it.
I know, for instance, Jackson Gore is on.
Right.
And that was voted to put them on. You know, with, with my, my house being located right on the village line, and this isn't the reason, I'd love to get on the sewer, but, and ask, you know, probably 20 years ago, maybe more, and was told I could not get on, I was not in the village, and the pipes are very near me.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, top of Gil Terrace, it's a matter.
But I wasn't in the village, so, no, you can't get on. So, I mean, that's not the issue of why I say it. I mean, I think the sewer is, plant is so valuable all around, you know, it's really controlling a lot right now.
I think it's very, very important to understand what assets we do have. And moving into the merger, we have to look at all angles. Most townsfolk have spoken about the electric light department as being a potential issue. So we focused on that and we worked through that. The wastewater, I think, is probably a statewide issue. I know Manchester is dealing with that on certain parcels of land that are for sale. I know different communities around Vermont are grappling with that, and I'm unfamiliar with the new changes that Mr. Tucker just made. But moving forward, it has always been, if you want to get on sewer, you'll have to pay, like Mr. Sanderson alluded to.
I was always willing to pay. And offered to pay. No, you can't.
We'll check back once this merger comes through.
What is our capacity right now? Where are we at?
We have a fair amount of capacity. What that is for overages in terms of gallons right now, I'm not sure, but we are, I think the last number was that our plant oper, is operating at about 60% capacity right now. So there is, and it's kind of the same with the, so, we could handle the capacity very easily, same with the, with water, you know. That, I think I mentioned before at the village meetings, that we have issues in the water commissioners, that we have issues with the water department that we don't, during this time of the year, we don't use enough water. So we have issues with balancing the pH that we actually have to get rid of some of the water. So more ratepayers in some instances would be good.
We also have to look for, you know, there are businesses and companies around here that are looking to add on currently, to do expansion product, projects. And how that looks at a state level and a local level, I guess, remains to be seen at this point.
I mean, Alice obviously brings up great points. I think I, what I think though is that I don't, I, I really just don't know why the merger, I don't see the merger really affecting any of those things adversely or really changing the outcome in any meaningful way. I think the idea of representation is, is a good one. I, I think that's something that we have an opportunity to build on. That's why, I think, long-term, I would like to see the water and sewer board itself be five members or, you know, expand somewhat. But at the end of the day, right now, the water board is voted by just village members, even though, and it's voted just by village residents. And, I mean, I, you know, I go to village meeting usually, mostly, I vote in village meeting regularly. There's regularly only 30 people that show up to vote on the village ballot. Most of the races are uncontested, there's very rarely anything contentious, but there's 30 people that vote, year after year, on those positions, on that budget. And those positions are what governs who gets on the water, the village water system and who gets, and the village trustees are the ones that vote on whether people get on the wastewater system. And so, I think by, by expanding the voting of those positions to the town, you're increasing the representation potential there. I think this does not actually affect who is eligible to be on the village water or sewer system, because right now, we already have people that are in the town that are on the village system. We have people that are on the village that are not on either water or sewer or electric department, and we have people that are outside of the town that are on village electric. And so it really, the village, the boundaries of the village have had no bearing on whether you are on water and sewer or electric for many years at this point. And you could get on by a vote of the respective boards of those bodies anyway. And so, that's where I think that there is just, there is some misconception about what the village currently does and what boundary, what those lines mean. I think the idea, with the Act 181 stuff, which is the, that was the Act 250 bill last year, that's some of the changes that George was talking about. I'm, I'm not sure if it would affect anything. I think it's a valid point and something to look into, but really, at the end of the day, if you're within the area that's capable of being served, you're right, that you, we do have some obligation, but I don't think whether or not the village boundary lines exist really matters, because we've already broken that boundary line in other cases, like the mountain and Jackson Gore. I think that there's not really, and we have the ability to serve outside, and we have considered serving other places, like the golf course recently. We have talked about adding service out to the golf course and to the, the Rublee Lane Apartments. Very recently, we've talked about that, and so those are all expansions that would have gone outside of the boundaries of the village as well. And so I really, I don't think that there's any change, substantial change that that would bring. I, I think it's something to, to confirm, but I'm, I really don't think it, it matters in that case, specific case.
Thank you, Mr. Nicole.
Anybody else?
I got another one. So, the way it currently is set up, I, I think of like water, wastewater, electric as utilities that the town is providing. Is there a reason, and maybe it was just how it was set up, that like, they aren't set up as necessarily like town employees and having that like personnel policy? Like, that seems like something where, you know, we're a town in Ludlow, if, if, you know, we have this in our policy, it should be for everyone involved.
Speaking about the electric department?
Yeah, electric department specifically, that was written out specifically in the charter to be separate.
Mr. Nicole can answer that better, I must, I, if memory serves, it had to do with the PUC.
With the electric department, explicitly, I, I'm not sure. It might, it might have more coming back from the PUC or the PSD. I think in general, the idea is just that there are people that don't want to pay for something they're not getting. And so there are people within the village that are not on village electric, there are people in the village that are not on village water, and there are people in the village not on village sewer. There are people that are not on all three, there are people that are on any combination of the three. And so people don't want to pay for a service they don't receive. And so if you had those employees, all the employees of the town, then you are paying for those employees to do things that you don't get. And so by separating them and keeping them and billing them all separately, we are only charging people that are on the water and sewer system, when those workers are working on the water and sewer system, we're only charging the ratepayers of those systems. With the electric department, it's the same way. We keep that even more siloed than we keep the water and sewer, but all those employees are only working to benefit the ratepayers of the electric department. And nobody that's on Green Mountain Power, you know, for the most part, is receiving services from the electric department. And they're not paying the electric department through taxes for work that they're, they don't receive a benefit from. Obviously, that's, you know, a broad generalization, we do share employees and we do, you know, Brett can testify, like, we do, you know, emergency response together, and so there is some sharing going on there, but those, those are unique circumstances. In general, the townspeople are not paying as a town, through their taxes, through their property taxes, for work that only benefits people that are on Ludlow Electric and the village in all the same.
But I guess, is there a reason why you have a different personnel policy for the light department versus the rest of the town?
I think it's similar because the electric department just, it has unique situations and it's dealing with high voltage systems. You know, there are special circumstances that, that govern some of the situations that they encounter, is probably the thinking. I, I, obviously, I didn't develop those policies when it split, but I think that's probably most of it.
Ms. Buxton.
So I just want to clarify that different towns do it different ways. And I'm quickly skimming your old village of Lud, not your old, your current Village of Ludlow charter. And I believe, you know, there's Stowe, Stowe has a municipally owned and operated utility, Linden does, Hardwick, Barton, Swanton, Morrisville. The answer is, you could require that situation that you're just describing, where everyone is all under the same umbrella. If you default to what the state allows for municipal utilities, they permit the, you ha, you leave the discretion to the community to operate the department and control the hiring and the, the management of the personnel. So it doesn't say one where the other, that you must or you may not. What this document does is it carries forward a blend of the current status, as we talked about earlier, where the, the operation of the department is all continued to be insulated. And I think what I'm looking at, just from a quick skim of your charters, I think it came back from your charter being a little different, which predated some of the state law that allows municipalities to, to manage things like personnel policies. That did grant the ability for the department to do just that, probably for a lot of the same public policy reasons that Logan just stated. So, the legal answer is, if you want it to be different, we can be, we can expressly say it shall be different, or you shall have the opportunity for it to be different. But currently, it is set, set to be the status quo.
To encourage the process, to, you know, to move forward. A little history was a time in Vermont that a village was important, you know, starting in the 1950s, the incorporation of villagers was, was an assessment for management of the town. After World War II, you know, the trend was really disincorporated or unincorporated. And one town's about, about 100 incorporated villages, and I believe we have about 29 most of your, your neighboring towns that had villages and, and long since unincorporated. You know, because it's, it's clear, the, the redundancy of, of the boards and, and the staff is just something that's not, not necessary now. And the, the good part of working through this process is, you have 70, 60 or 70 other examples of villages that are unincorporated, you know, to use as a basis, which sounds like that, you know, that is what, what is being done here. Certainly, there's some complications, but you're not the first to do this. So I just wanted to encourage, you know, now is, is a, is a time to do this. And, you know, I, I would love to just sort of work through these and, and hopefully get, get a positive outcome to, to have this happen. Thank you.
Can I just make one comment? I think this sort of ties back to the conversation and question that Alice posed, is, voters have expressed to me that are in the town, that when the vote came up previous for the merger and the discussion, a lot of their negative toward it was that they didn't want to pay for something they weren't going to get. And how can you make it fair to say, hey, we want you to take on all this expense for something you'll never get, right? You could live off, on some back road in Ludlow and there's no chance of ever getting a service. And so I, I think maintaining the status quo, even though it might be not the idealist policy, right, to have everything, or there might be a future thing, is, you know, I, I agree with Bruce, you know, in 50 years, things could be drastically different. But in order for the, get step one done, to get the merger done, and for the people who currently don't have to contribute for those things because they're not ratepayers, and to be really clear that that policy's not changing for right now, I think that's very important to, I don't think that was necessarily clear at, to some people, per se.
Anybody else?
Just to be clear, the village is not subsidizing water, wastewater, electric right now. So it's really just, hey, we're ready for the, you know, those big capital expenses or those kind of things, but other than that, it's, the ratepayers pay, it's a self-sustaining.
I mean, really, it comes down to the administrative burden that we're going to be reducing. I mean, do we have an idea of what the estimated reduction of?
No.
Administrative, I know that's a hard estimate, the idea, but I mean, you're going to be doing in one regard, like 50% less doling, you know? I bought four bales of hay, one goes here, two went here, one went there, right? It's going to be three, you know?
So I think that, yes, there's some redundancy that was talked about, but also, I think some of the disadvantages that I've, you know, in my short time here that I've run into, just, you know, natural disaster, differentiating between a village and a town with FEMA and Vermont Emergency Management, is it dis-serv- is it a disservice to the town because you are running two different entities? You know, they, it's treated as such, and someone, you know, for all, you know, we lose money, for example, I'm just going to use the debris cleanup, right? Because we had to differentiate between the village and the town debris cleanup, obviously, we're only getting a percentage back of each one of those rather than the lump sum. The FEMA does not care whether it is, you know, for all they, their concern, the town of Ludlow is in southern Vermont, and the village of Ludlow is a hundred miles away. So, that is a distinct challenge that we faced, along with, you know, applying and funding for grants, state and federal grants, you know.
Paving grant.
Paving grant, you know, we, we beat that horse about the access road. It streamlines our, I guess, availability for funds where we, we do run into projects that, well, we can't fund it completely because one, one entity is higher or lower on the priority list than the other. And it just, it creates a little bit of burden that ultimately falls on the taxpayers. So, again, yes, the redundancy, it will be, the folks in the, in the office and in the clerk's office will be breathing a sigh of relief if this goes through, that, you know, that'll be like Christmas morning. But there is a lot more outside, you know, we don't have, you know, I think Sarah alluded to it when we first started here. And there are a few towns that have gone through this and they have a different highway department for the village and the town. They have, you know, those are separated, and there are two different departments that may or may not get along. That's a problem that we don't have, you know, operationally wise. As, you know, somewhere, you know, someone who's out there every day, probably not going to notice a heck of a lot because we kind of do it so well already. It's, it's a lot of the backside of it, so, you know, a number, yes, it, the redundancy will, will be nice, but I, I don't think I could put a number necessarily on that.
Bruce?
Just, just one final, and this is, I think it's a great discussion, but I think it's really important to, the water and the sewer are not separate from the town. Because those employees are tasked to go work, even though their, their time may go to a different department. You'll see a sewer employee working up at the transfer station, you'll see them working. You don't see that with the electric light. You see support for the town, and I agree, you, you need to keep it separate. My point continues to be, make this so, much so that the select board can make changes down the road to, because with the, if you want to be separate, then you have a employees that are billing out for water and sewer. It's done through the town. You have employees that, that they're, they do their own work. And, you know, right now, it works really well. I think it's a, it's a really good thing, but don't kid yourself that just because there's a board of water and sewer, that it is separate, because it is not. And the, the electric light definitely is. And I think the town has done a really good job of keeping separates of those employees that work water and sewer. People that don't get the water and sewer aren't paying for, for them. But, you know, I think it's blended through time. You know, so, I think it's just something, but I think this is a really good discussion and, and, you know, I, you should all be applauded for the work you've put in to get us to this point, because many before have not been able to. And I had a discussion with Mr. Brown a couple of months ago, and he's like, it'll never pass, you guys never, and you guys are really working hard to do it. So, good job, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Ms. Buxton.
One final comment that may ease some of your concerns. The legislature in 2022, I believe, passed a provision that permitted towns who are operating under a charter to suspend their eight or part or all of their charter upon a vote of the town, so a townwide vote. You may suspend part or all of your charter for up to three years in order to abide by a provision that already exists in, in law. And so an example of that might be prior to changes about whether or not towns could vote to have a municipal manager. A town may have a charter about how that management op, structure might work. A town might now, after 2022, pass by a townwide vote, a provision that says, hey, we want to, we want to not operate under our charter, we want to do what otherwise we could do under law, but we accidentally tied our hands in that darn charter vote. You can do that now, and that three years will provide you time for your town to repeal part of your charter, maybe to work for a year under a different operational structure to see if you want to go back to the way that it was. But it is a really unique feature, and I do have one client, one town, Montgomery, who just utilized it this past March. So, I don't know of any other towns who've, who've used it quite yet, but if there is something here that you feel like is a little bit, you know, you're a little unsure of, know that, that so long as the legislature doesn't change this, you will have that flexibility upon a vote of the entire town to suspend, and you won't have to go through the entire charter process that requires a legislative sign-off in the future.
Thank you.
Is that a repeatable process or a one-time-only thing?
Repeat, repeatable process.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got two more, and then I think about. So, everything in that charter is set in stone unless we want to pursue, you know, do, do that three-year thing or do that. But if we said, hey, we want to up the water and sewer commissioners to five, we need to do this whole charter process. Did the committee, was there any look at, hey, three or five select board makes that decision similar to electric light on there? If that's, you know, one of those, hey, we don't want to rock the boat too much, but it gives us the option down the road. And then the other point was, I guess, similar to, you know, if we're doing status quo, select board village, you have eight members. Justin's doing double duty, so you could keep that status quo, bring it into seven, but obviously chose to stick with five. So what is the, everything else is pretty well outlined, but what is the plan with, with the two boards for that change?
Yeah, I actually brought that up, Noah, because I do serve on the trustees and the select board. So it was my original preference to have a seven-person select board. Again, we opted for streamlined process and not to redevelop the boards. There was a couple back and forth. I think the majority of the committee was on the side of five members. The reasons for that, we can go, I guess, more into, but we didn't really want to restructure any of these boards. And we also found, I might be speaking out of turn here, because I am very tired, but the water commissioners, we were filling those seats and we were having trouble having people fill the, that board already with the three. So, we found it, it didn't behoove the town to make it a five-person board because we were having trouble finding three people at that time. Mr. Nicole.
Yeah, I don't have too much to add. I think it's, my recollection is similar to Justin's. I think there was, there was a very specific problem with the, with the electric department, we felt like. And we felt like because the service area has expanded so much over the years, that really we should be to five members at least of, of town members. We also, we recognized that we serve Plymouth and Proctorsville, Cavendish, and we have no representation from them, and so we wanted to create that, that extra two seats, that avenue to have some representation from those towns. The water and sewer board, you know, maybe it was just the, you know, the benefit of me being electric commissioner that I really was, you know, front and center on the, on the committee, saying that I, I felt like there was a specific case and a reason to expand that board. Uh, but we didn't have, you know, a member from the, the water commissioner to, to speak to that explicitly. You know, I think for myself, I, I would like to see the select board expanded to seven, and I think it would make sense for reasons. But I think that, uh, my thinking with keeping it at five for now was a bit of that, like, I just don't, I don't know if the, where the town is on that issue. I didn't want expanding that board to seven members to be the reason that the, the merger got defeated. And, you know, keep it at what it is now, and, you know, vote next year to see if you can expand the select board, expand the water, water and sewer board, you know, vote on those things later as separate issues was kind of my thought process with those ones specifically.
And so what does happen, say this goes through, in March, you're going to have five select board members, three trustees. How does that merge in July?
So, in July, the three trustees no longer hold a position, the five select board members hold their position. To your point, and I'll, I guess I'll take my direction from members of the, the committee or if folks want to instruct me on what I should bring before you, I can add in language that says something like, you know, upon a future vote, townwide vote, you know, whatever constraints you want me to put on it, you could make changes like to seven or to five, but that the default will be the status quo, except that, you know, should the town have a, a townwide vote, you know, you could choose to change it without going through the whole process.
If we wanted to change it to seven or the commissioners to five, we need to do this whole charter?
Well, that's what I'm saying is, um, the nice thing about charters is you build, you know, it's your own rules. So, if what you vote out says that in your charter, upon a future vote of the town of Ludlow, the town may expand the number of select board members to seven. You can, and this is how it will look, you know, those members shall be, this is what the terms will be, we can put that in.
I think that, judging by the conversation tonight, that you have, that we have the default. It is what, right now it is, but kind of what we've been talking about, leaving room to expand and change without going through this process again, but a, you know, if we wanted to expand the select board to seven, we could do that.
Do a town-wide vote.
Sarah adds, adds the language, we could do that at a vote.
Town meeting.
At, at any time of the year, you know, when we have a vote, we could just have that on the ballot.
Yeah.
I think that's a great option to have, it doesn't handcuff us, but it also allows us to, to do it like we do everything else, rather than, you know, this is, this is cover something, I wouldn't want to have to go back and be like, man, something this easy, we should have done that, but now we have to go through months of planning this again. So, having those things, I think, is, is a key.
I had similar language under the listers and assessors, saying, listers are as it is, but should the town ever decide they wanted to move to an assessor situation upon a vote of the town, which is what can currently happen under state law. So I can kind of mirror some of that same language and bring that when you're ready, your boards are ready to look at that.
Yeah, I think that, I'd like to see that, it just gives us that flexibility and, you know, I'm sure you're not, you're not cheap in going through all of this.
I'm super cheap.
Um, Ms. Buxton, I'd like to ask you one question about that. Because of the proclivities or the direction of the legislators, adding too much quote-unquote vague language or open-ended language into this document could jeopardize this entire charter process?
What will happen if the legislature thinks you're, you're vague, or you're moving in a direction where you're going to have some sort of a power, where the balance of power changes in a way that isn't favorable with public policy in the House at that time, is they would either reject it or they won't approve it as, as, as passed.
Which means we would have to go to the next session?
No, actually, no, they can just strike it, and probably a group of you will be there lobbying and perhaps even negotiating with them. If there's something they don't like, they'll ask the town to come in and explain itself, and you'll do that. And then, um, they'll say, we're not buying it, and a group of you might say, well, how about this? And that's how it will be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Logan?
I guess I, I should say, just in my experience with charters, we haven't done much with Ludlow in recent memory, except for the, the one provision the select board adopted. But I would just say, just a caution to the town and to, to you all, that this, this charter will likely change. It's likely to change in the legislature, at least words here and there. Some of these, you know, scrivener's errors, things like that, they're going to correct, they're going to fix. You're going to have a lot of eyes on this document, you know, twelve committee members in the House, five in the Senate. They're going to catch things that we all missed. They're going to change other things that they maybe just don't like for whatever reason. It is more than likely going to change, likely not substantially, but just to, to keep that in mind, that there are, they are going to make changes to this, and, yeah, there will be, certainly, I expect to be, to be up there as a, as a resident of the town, just lobbying for this, if it makes it that far, if the town approves it. And I expect others of you will as well, and it will be up to us to try to convince them not to change the things we like and to change things that we're okay with or will accept. And so just, yeah, keep that in mind for sure.
Brett? Just one question, then last one.
I thought you said last.
I'm sorry, I lied, I lied. So, is what you're saying, Logan, in the sense of potential bargaining, is it better for us to aim more loose? Let's just say we put those provisions in, the, to potentially expand now. We go to, we go to negotiate, they say they don't like it, we say, hey, we'll leave it at status quo. This sounds, is that basically the, is that the better plan?
Fold the cards.
I'm not trying to rock the boat, no.
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, I think that, I, I, you know, I guess that's, you know, that's some, some chess, you know, thinking is to try to hold things out there that you want or expect them to change so they don't change other things.
But that's also something we want, right?
It's hard math to, to do, but I think there's, there's some value in that, for sure. I think, you know, like, it's things that we want, I, I don't see any harm in putting them in, for sure. And I think, you know, to your point, it is certainly possible that they'll see them and they'll be like, I don't know, like, have we done this before, is this something that, you know, like, is otherwise in statute? If it's not, then it might be, you know, maybe they will want to pull it out. If it is, you know, new and it's something that, you know, they haven't seen explicitly, they may still be like, oh, you know, this is kind of the purpose of charters, is like.
Catch them on a good day.
Crucibles and like, there are opportunities for towns to try something and see if they work, and then the, the state wants to adopt it as a policy. That, that has happened many times, is the town does something and the legislature approves it, and it's kind of like, we don't know if this is a good idea, we'll let you do it. And then over time, they're like, well, that's a good policy, we should adopt that so all towns can do it. And then, you know, so that's certainly a possibility in this case and, and others.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Is that it?
So I would, I guess, you know, course of action, we do have back-to-back meet, um, kind of back-to-back select board and trustees meetings coming up, we have some next week, then first week of June. So I will put this, I think it's good to kind of, for us all to take some time, digest what we talked about tonight. We'll have it on the agenda for meeting on Monday. I'll talk, I'll converse with Sarah about some of the new things we spoke about. We'll go over it at least on Monday and Tuesday. And then at that meeting, we can decide what the next step is, and we, so we have, you know, if we do say, hey, this is, we're feeling good here, we can go and we have a meet, another board meeting in another week. So, I think that that's, but I think tonight was very, was very good, and thank you, Sarah, very much.
Great job working on that document, and thank you, fellow committee members as well.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the trustees' meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.